Just a quick update, we've done test pits at the drain basin locations. That happened on November 1st. We just got those results last week. Performed a title search as far as the rights within the Brook Street extension to confirm that we can construct the work as shown on the plan for the crossing at the stream. Have a chance to re hang flags, have Laura of Nova Armstrong confirm them in the field, and then also resurvey them and pick them up on the plan. When I left to come up here this evening, someone was putting up the finishing touches on the plan. The planning board, we're running concurrently as you know, had granted our respectful request to hold a public hearing, a special public hearing on November 29th, with the idea that the revised plans would be in this week, giving them time for review. And so, again, this evening, I spoke with Laura, understanding that information is coming in basically last week that constituted the plan changes, and understanding we're still punishing the finishing touches on the plan, obviously didn't give us time to resubmit and Nova Armstrong time to review. It's been a long process. I'm confident that we have all the information required to address the outstanding issues. So, I'm here this evening before the commission, again, to, I believe your next hearing is on, excuse me, December 12th.
Yep.
If the commission sees fit, we, again, would respectfully request at the commission's convenience to hold something earlier, a special hearing, to allow us to hopefully close this matter out ideally before the first of the month.
Would you like a continuance?
Well, yes.
Okay.
And again, with, you know, understanding the commission's schedules, all we can do is ask the commission to work with us to try to get a special hearing date scheduled for the week of the 26th, which will be the week after Thanksgiving. And as long as Laura feels that that will be enough time for her to review, again, we don't want to waste the commission's time, and that would be something that I would respectfully request on behalf of the applicant this evening.
Charlie, did you hear his request?
No. I was arguing.
Okay.
He requested a continuance.
He requested a continuance.
Will I make a motion?
He would, he would like a, hang on. He would also like a, a meeting, a special hearing with us.
Like a continuance for two weeks, Charlie?
Two weeks?
Yeah. We want a special hearing on the 26th, the week after Thanksgiving.
We'd have to advertise, two weeks would be at Thanksgiving, no?
Excuse me. Yes, sir. Could you talk to Charlie, please?
Yes.
Let's use this.
So, if the, if the commission is amenable to it, you could continue it to this, a special hearing date this evening and not require re-notification. If that makes a difference. At that point, it would be contingent upon the commission's availability, understanding it would be the week after the holiday week.
That would be at the Thanksgiving?
Yes, the week of the 26th.
Is there any special reason why you would like to have it in two weeks instead of our next formal hearing?
We're pushing to try to secure all of, all of our approvals prior to December 1st in an effort to meet some of our project deadlines.
There probably wouldn't be no guarantee that you would get it by December 1st unless they get some information from you.
Correct.
Updated.
Correct.
Revised plans.
Correct, and I think that's-
So that means that the next hearing, we'll be discussing revised plans, and if they don't work out, you're still not going to make December 1st. You're counting on that we would approve the project at the next meeting. You've had a lot of things to revise, and-
And we've, we've taken care of, I believe we've taken care of all of them. A lot of the review comments from Laura were specific to the delineation and the accuracy of the survey, which we spent, you know, some time reconfirming that on the ground with conventional survey methods. In addition to the test pit information, which, again, we just got last week and incorporated that into the drainage design, which will allow us to account for some infiltration. That coupled just with some wholesale changes as far as landscaping and trying to increase some setbacks. It's taken a while, but I'm confident that the plan set, like I said, my hopes was to have it done today and resubmitted to you folks and Laura today. Someone was working on it. When I left the office, I'm confident that it's going to be done and submitted back to Laura, so that it would give her roughly two weeks, maybe a little bit less.
We'll have the holiday in there, and then we also, you know, we'll need hard copies of everything, so it depends on when we get that, and you know, that, that's kind of, that's narrowing that two weeks down to really one week. And there's also the addition of the stormwater review, which will also have to be done, conducted on the revised plans, and a lot of our comments are also contingent upon, and the commission's approval would be contingent upon, you know, all of the stormwater comments being addressed, so GCA has to finish their review as well.
Yep.
So.
I would rather continue it to our regular meeting date.
Does that motion, Charlie?
I'd like to hear it.
I mean, I, again, I, I neglected to take into consideration the holiday week.
If you had supplied her through the information that she requested, we could hack it, we could hack it out at tonight's meeting, and if there were any inconsistencies that could get fixed, and a two-week continuance would make sense. But I really don't think that it's going to work. I mean, we can continue it, but what's the sense if it's not going to be approved?
Sure.
If you're counting on approval-
Would you, understanding the back end of December with the holidays as well, would the commission be amenable to continuing it to the first week in December with the idea that we would get the revised plans back to Laura? It would give her-
Then we would be meeting the first week and the second week, because everybody's not going to ask for a continuance.
Well, the idea there would be is that we would revise, have a revised set of plans, reviewed by Laura, we'd be able to discuss them. My, you know, my hope is when I submit the revised plans that it addresses all-
You're still going to miss your December 1st deadline, because if you, December the, let's see, the meeting the 12th would be the 10th, and we'd have our meeting. You're still not going to make 12-1.
I wouldn't make 12-1, but I would certainly be putting ourselves in a position to hopefully bring this project to a close, certainly by the 12th of December. Because I'm, again, the amount of time that we've taken with the redesign, I'm confident that anything outstanding on this revised plan set would be limited to, hopefully, a technical issue that would be easily resolved and within easily a week's time.
Now, you heard comments from our consultant at our last hearing.
Correct.
You had how many weeks, just to reply?
Our last comment letter was dated the September 12th, so it's two months ago.
And you, you could have supplied the information that you wanted in this, that time period.
Some of it, we could, it's, it's somewhat all integral, where a lot of the stuff was going to change, and so, instead of submitting an interim plan set with a stormwater design that we knew based on the requirement of the test pits were more than likely going to change.
But the stormwater plan wouldn't change the wetland delineations or most of the things that we're concerned with.
Correct.
The stormwater is the planning board's.
It's also under your, your purview as well, though, because the stormwater regulations are actually in the Wellands Protection Act.
And the proximity of the stormwater facilities may have changed, or the discharge towards a resource area has changed. So, just in the interest of, again, not bogging down review time with a plan set that we know is, for lack of a better term, fictitious, we hadn't gone through and redesigned a whole-
Would our continuance at 12:12 make any difference with the planning board?
No, we have a continuance for the 28th.
You haven't approved this-
No.
Proposal, you know?
We haven't seen it.
And there's probably no proposal, closing is nowhere in your sight for the planning board right at the moment.
We have agreed to a special meeting on November 28th, but having not seen it or any-
28th of this month?
Of this month. Having not seen it, we also have our regularly scheduled meeting on December 5th. So it's conceivable that we could not approve it on the 28th and vote to approve it or not approve it on the 5th, or go two weeks later and five, four, on the 19th. So, there's a lot of different dates that I'm sure he's hoping to shoot for.
I don't mind meeting a week earlier if it's going to make progress, if it's just a convenience thing for you and nothing in it for us, it's just-
I'm confident it will allow us to make progress and hopefully bring finality.
Have you worked at all on revisions up to this point?
Yes.
He puts it together. You asking him for a personal favor?
I don't need to meet in a special meeting, I, I don't care. But, I mean, how does it work out with the rest of the board?
You don't?
And-
Yeah.
We should be able to have a comment, comments by the first week of December, but not the, not the last week of November.
Would that be a problem to you, meeting two weeks?
Uh, two weeks, three weeks. I, I don't think we would have comments ready the week of the 26th, but we could the following week, the week of the 3rd.
That would be greatly appreciated if you-
With the 7th, make any difference? December 7th?
December 7th is a Friday.
Friday. Maybe I set the wrong date.
The 5th would be a Wednesday.
Okay, that's the day.
Yes, that would, we would be able to make that.
Everybody can make the 5th?
December.
Okay, I make the motion that we continue this hearing to 12:5.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three weeks from tonight.
Three weeks from today.
Thank you.
What time, Charlie?
We're meeting, we're meeting with the planning board on, at 6 o'clock.
On the 5th?
On the, on the 28th.
28.
But there's a, there's a, it's very possible that it will then be continued for another week, could be continued for another two weeks, so having not seen the plans, we'll see.
Yep.
What time will the meeting be on the 5th?
7:30.
7:30.
Anyone else comments on this? Okay. Let's move on. An abbreviated notice of an area resource delineation by John DuValley.
I don't see Brandon Crandall for you.
Huh?
Good evening, how are you folks this evening? I brought some hard copies in case you guys wanted them.
Yeah, we do.
Okay.
Are we talking about lot 4 first, or lot 6 and 7?
6 and 7.
6 and 7 first, okay.
So 4 is going to be the first. Before we deal with 6 and 7, look at 4.
Oh, yeah, these are all the same.
What's that, Charlie?
Before we deal with 6 and 7, 4 is next on the agenda. You're not all up.
I have 4, but there was some comments from the consultant engineer, so-
It's not ready yet.
Correct.
Okay. Then we're going to continue that hearing.
On lot 4, Maple.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to continue that, please.
Continue lot 4, for AMS builders until 12:12.
Right, thank you.
Have you seen these plans?
I did, yeah, I sent a comment letter out to you guys that you guys thought was there.
Yep, there's a comment.
The one pager.
I read them on the line, but I, I don't remember them all. You approved the wetland lines, but there are, if I read it correctly, there are resource areas that aren't going to be on the ORAD.
Correct, so we would recommend having a special, like, having a condition in the ORAD that states additional bank and land underwater may exist on the site but are not depicted on the plan of record. These jurisdictional areas were not subject to review under this application, and their boundaries are neither confirmed nor denied by the Dayton Conservation Commission.
Okay, was it, was this one of the plans that had something lacking?
They submitted revised plans today to me for, just for lots 6 and 7, and we reviewed the plans. They've met all of our concerns, with the exception that it wasn't stamped by a PLS, a professional land surveyor, so.
Still not stamped by a PLS.
Correct.
Stamped by a, excuse me.
Excuse me, is that a requirement in the reg- I'm here because Jim Hall from Mount Hope Engineering is on vacation, so I figured I should at least show up, and Brandon from Ecosystems is in here, so I'm not exactly sure who should be stamping it, so.
Well, one of the requests that our consultant made is that it be stamped by a-
Registere surveyor.
Yes.
Okay, well, I can get, Jim Hall's back from vacation from Mount Hope on Monday. I could get stamped plans in the PDF probably by Tuesday or Wednesday, if that works for you folks.
You know, we, we feel, we find that you, you could vote to approve the wetland boundaries as shown on the plans, and then not issue the order until, the ORAD, until you get that stamped plan. We, we, no changes to the plan will be made except for that stamp, so, you know, just getting a stamp is-
So we can close the hearing?
Yes.
I move that we close the hearing and not issue an ORAD until the OPS or PLS-
Okay.
A stamp is on the-
Fair enough.
Second? I'll side him. Take what?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that on Oak Street you're talking about?
Yeah.
Because I'm right on Oak Street, and I know it, I just want to make sure it wasn't near my side where you're talking. You're talking the end of Oak Street near Maple on 6 and 7?
Come look at the map.
Oak Street, Maple Springs.
Oak Street.
Walkin' Maple.
Yeah. Okay, this is where I am.
Sure, all right.
Five and six.
Actually, I already done that.
Four, we would talk.
Oak Street, right here. This is where they're talking about.
Well, we discussed it in our presentation.
One, lot 1, 2, side by side.
Sorry.
Right here, and this is-
Sorry, talking to myself.
All still underwater also.
Now, that's what we've spent much doing, just hold-
Sometimes I get an answer.
Latman zone.
So what are, what are you proposing to do with all the water? Where's it going to go?
What we're considering tonight is only the, other than the ancients.
All right.
Every one of these lots has to be filed with the commission-
Okay.
-in the future.
Right.
But all we're doing is, is approving it and then red.
Okay.
Just the lines. Just the delineation.
My biggest concern is right now, where water's going to go, so when we have that meeting, I'm going to definitely-
And why do we have filings?
All right, because I have one of these, not the newest one, but I have the first plan.
Right, and we modify-
This is upland, upland.
That's fine.
We're downland and below us right here, this is literally a small part of the water.
Here's the-
I just don't want to get into-
The river areas up here.
Yep, that's what it is. All right, I thank you.
That's where the battle comes.
Yes, right.
We're only approving wetland, the delineation.
Yeah. All right, I thank you very much.
Sure enough.
Thank you very much.
I'll sit here, take it easy. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, folks, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You want us to hang onto these, ma'am?
Oh, yeah, yep, I've got plenty, thank you.
Then we're gonna tear the ORAD.
Yeah. I knew that. There you go, Joe.
12:12, huh?
That's 12:12. National Bridge. There we go.
Okay.
This one, yeah.
There's even a problem.
First one's one big step.
Yep. You need a paper flip? You need a paper flip? Oh, for this? Yeah. New England Power Company, that you?
Yes.
Careful, she might set your power off. Yeah.
We don't have a stand.
Oh, that's okay, I can just move it up and show you.
Get a little closer.
Okay.
We should have a stand, how about that seat?
Okay. That works. If anybody wants me to turn it to the audience, please let me know. All right, hi, everyone, my name is Kate Rimol, I'm here from BSC Group on behalf of New England Power Company. This is for an exploratory soil boring project. So this is along the 327 transmission line. As you can see here, it's a parcel that's sandwiched between Winthrop Street and Maple Street. It's right on the Dayton-Rohovitz Town boundary, and pretty much the entire area with where the transmission line is, is a pretty big wetland. So the project involves exploratory soil, soil boring, at just one structure here, structure 140. So upland access is available from either roadway, but the structure itself is in a wetland. So, the work will involve one boring at each structure leg. The boreings are pretty minor, about four to six inches in diameter.
How big?
About four to six inches.
In diameter?
Exactly, yep, so they're pretty small, and it's really just for planning and design purposes, because eventually the structure will be replaced as part of a separate project. So, overall, everything will be restored upon completion, the soils after they're analyzed will be, will be backfilled, the area will be restored. So, to summarize, it is exploratory soil boreings, and then also the construction matting, which I'm sure you're familiar with, that's used to access the structure, which is what we're proposing under this project. So that's a brief overview, but happy to answer any questions.
No? How deep?
Typically, the structure foundations will go about 20 to 25 feet, so I wouldn't imagine they'd go much beyond that.
And, and one at that site?
Yep.
And two more at different sites? Or one more at, at two different sites?
So this, this is it in Dayton.
That's it in Dayton?
Exactly, yeah, so they're really only needed for structures that are on angles. I think they're currently wood structures, they're going to be upgraded eventually to concrete, but it's only the structures that are on bends and the wire, so that's why it's really only just one.
You say that was going to be done on construction mats?
Exactly.
All right.
Yeah, they'll use a small tracked drill rig, so as much as they can, they'll stage things in upland locations, but just so that the rig can drive on in there.
I'll make the motion that we close the hearing and issue an order of conditions for that project.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
All right, thank you very much.
Michael Wheeler. Michael Wheeler. Clark Avenue.
That's a proposal for up here.
Yep.
And apparently they're not here. I'll make a motion, we continue to 12:12.
Second? All in favor? Bernard Miranda. Two driveways on an existing ancient way. Oh, I know where he is.
It's on Elm Street.
He's on Elm Street, yeah.
Right? Yeah.
He wanted some new plants. He wanted a new driveway away from the flag, so he did it. It was up against the flags, and we moved them away from the flags. The other plan you had, had that, but the plan to get so we moved them away from the flags.
I got caught hunting on Mr. Miranda's property. I was caught hunting on his property. He made me come down and look at this wetland area. There's nothing I could do about it. I couldn't see anything that signified this piece as a wetland.
No, the, the partners did, did soils, did all soils in here, and he said there's no wetlands, they couldn't, wouldn't even put flags, because there's nothing there.
I just had a problem with it last week. Jim brought it up, and he agreed to-
Move it.
Move it. And it's moved, and I'll make a motion that we close the hearing, issue an order of conditions for Mr. Miranda for his driveways.
Second?
I have a question. I was at the, the planning board, my name is Dean Robital, I live directly across the street-
Okay.
-on the driveway, and you, Mr. Fennett, you know the area.
Sure.
A couple of questions. The planning board, they said they weren't going to pay, because my concern is the runoff in the rain.
We're not, we're not going to pay that.
I, I know, I know, we went with the planning board, that was good. My concern too is the wetlands being flagged, and, you know, the pond, that as soon as you go onto the property up at Elm Street, there's a pond on your left-hand side. I don't know if it's a vernal pond or just a regular pond.
No.
It hasn't, it hasn't been decided what it is.
I can show you what that is. And your people approved it already? What happens, when, when you approve this, you allowed him, you allow these people to put a, there's an underground stream that goes under here, it's, it's-
Oh, I know where it's standing. I can't remember the woman's name.
And you allow them, you allow them to put a drainage pipe, and that water goes through here, and this runs out. So it's, it's a depression that's there, but it's an intermittent.
Now, if I remember correctly, the front of that property is swaled.
Yeah.
And-
And the driveways are going to, are going to pitch off to, to the side here, so there's a drainage system, and I have to put a 12-inch pipe, the town wants me to put a 12-inch pipe across the front. There's, I think there's one there now, it's an old cement one, but he wanted to put a, a new pipe that will take that one out and put a new one in. And there's a drain, and it goes across the street. There's two drains that go across the street, they go in his property, but they've been there since Elm Street was there. Those drains have always been there.
One of the, one of the drains, it's not used very much, it's on the far end of the property, but the one that's directly across the street from the driveway runs constantly. And right now, if you have a heavy rain, it floods out of my backyard, and I'm concerned with, you know, a, a big rainstorm with the way it's going to be pitched and made, that it may flood, I'm only concerned about flooding my yard.
We're not, yeah.
And it's directly, directly across the street.
The controls are the same, right?
Same, no, we're not changing nothing.
So water runs down there already?
It's there already.
Right.
That, that road's been there for 100 years.
Now, what the only difference is going to be-
Gravel.
Gravel instead of grass.
Right.
Right now, it's not much of a road.
There's a little bit of gravel. Right now, it's even worse, when you're going in, it's all loo, and when we drive in and out of there, it just makes rut, so once you gravel it, it's gonna stop a lot of that from going out.
And Mr. Finney, you know that, the pond that's there?
Well, I don't know if there's a pond there.
Well, I thought you went up there, you always hunted up there with.
Yeah, I do.
When the Pages built the house, it wasn't a vernal pool.
I don't, I don't know if it was decided or not, I have no idea.
It wasn't a vernal pool.
There is a pond.
Yeah, there is a pond.
Uh. Where's the pond?
It's a depression, it's here, it's just a little.
Oh.
The guy that owned it before, that owned the big farmhouse, he dug that out. 'Cause the water used to come down through here. That's why you made him put that drain pipe through there.
Right.
Get the water from this side across. So he, he dug that area there.
So it's not here?
At that time.
No, it's over here.
Oh, all right.
It's on that land, it's not on my land.
When the Pages filed, it wasn't a vernal pool, it was determined that it didn't have vernal pool.
Oh, I didn't know the determination, I didn't know that. But, I mean, what is the, the, the conservation's rules on building anything within a certain feet of a pond?
If it's, if it's a potential vernal pool, there, there will have regulations for that. But it was, at that time, they determined that it wasn't a, a vernal pool. So, that part of our bylaw doesn't apply. It didn't apply for, for LePage, and it shouldn't apply for him.
Is, is there any distance where he has to keep away from that, the pond?
Not. If it was a vernal pool, yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
But it's not a vernal pool.
Okay.
That's the point I'm trying to make. When the Pages built their house, it was determined then, by consultants, that it wasn't a vernal pool.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Okay.
How many plans do you need of these?
Five?
How many do you need?
That's all we need.
Okay, that's, there's five here, you need, you need all five?
No.
Okay, how many do you need?
How many you want, Charlie?
I only need one.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miranda.
Uh, right now, you have, the drainage that's there is there, it's run through your property.
Right.
Uh, is there anything that, uh, that's gonna change? I mean, maybe it will increase and maybe it won't.
It might decrease if he just gravels it.
Yeah, we're gonna gravel it so that water don't seep in. It won't run out.
Well, it should make it.
That's just what I'm hoping for, and I know.
Yeah, no, we, we would, we'll do it.
He's gonna put a pipe in there and, and improve that little area there, because it's so overgrown now.
Yeah, we're gonna cut it all, clean it up.
Yeah.
Clean it up.
Yeah, you're making, yeah, you have to win there.
Yeah, when the Pages built their house, they changed, they put a pipe in there on the other side of my house, and I've never, I haven't had a problem so far.
Yeah.
It should, maybe it'll be a little better this time.
Yeah, I, I certainly hope so.
Our orders of conditions always include a condition that says that the runoff is a problem. That if his project creates a problem.
Mm-hmm.
Then you'll have to correct it.
Okay.
So that's standard condition in, in our orders.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Next on the agenda, is abbreviated notice of resource delineation.
They've asked for continuums.
Okay.
Uh, let us, what's the? Bring your, bring this. Dickinson. I didn't record you then, I'm sorry.
What's that? That's Charlie. Charlie, when can I pick up the order of conditions?
What's that?
When can I pick up the order of conditions?
Oh, it's gonna take a while to, it won't be tomorrow.
Oh, a week.
We'll mail it here.
Okay. You can go back hunting.
Hello, gentlemen, uh, this is a follow-up from, uh, the meeting last month when we submitted the, uh, ANRAD for, uh, lot, revised Lot 1 on Main Street, which is within the Cesspool Map 16, Lot 36. Um, I have the, uh, receipt from the, the Gazette.
Go ahead.
And I, uh, had my consultant, uh, meet the town's consultant.
Yep.
To confirm the wetland delineations that were there, in fact, they reconfirmed it, reflagged, uh, the, the wetland. Um, flags that were previously, uh.
Well, we've received, our consultant is here tonight.
Oh, hey!
Nice to see you again.
Not there.
Um, I, so, we were, when, while we were out in the field, um, we had to hang some, or rehang the flags, because the flags were old and they were falling apart, so we where we found the, like, where they'd been tied, we rehung the flags. Um, and I had no problems with the wetland boundary as flags in the field, however, um, we did observe a vernal pool in the back, uh, southeast corner of the pro- it's not actually on your property, it's off property, but the buffer zone and the boundary of the vernal pool, which is measured a hundred feet from the mean annual boundary, that might extend onto the Lot 1. Um, so that would, that's our only concern with the line at this time.
I think he owns a property next door too.
Sure, but it, that's not subject to the ANRAD, so you would only approve the flags that are actually on the parcel, but that, that vernal pool needs to be shown on the plans, just so we can, um, yeah, so we can know where the boundary is. Um, and there is a copy of, on that letter, I don't know if you have received it, this one, that, we can take that copy there.
Where would it be, uh, in relation to the?
It is within the wetland, so it's in this corner here.
Okay, so this is, so these are the deline-
So these are the wetland flags, yep.
Okay.
And then the vernal pool is in here, but it's, it's actually, can show you on the aerial.
So this is the hundred-foot buffer here from the?
Well, vernal pools have their own buffer.
Okay.
Actually, if it's a vernal pool, the vernal pool itself would be, uh, much larger than the mean high water shown in the pool.
Yeah. And the way that it's, uh, so this, what's shown here is actually the, the, um, DEP map wetlands, so the wetlands on site are actually substantially more. But the vernal pool is approximately where they show the wetlands. This is approximately the vernal pool.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, that should be shown, uh, because the, you read the definition of vernal pool in the bylaw, it's measured, the actual boundary of vernal pool is measured a hundred feet from the mean annual boundary, and then there's another hundred-foot buffer zone off of that. Right here.
You see, see, uh, I guess consultant?
We didn't have his email, so I called him today, and I'd never heard back, I actually called him last Thursday as well, um, to give him this note, information, but I, um, I did not see him.
Pass that on to him.
Yep.
Yep.
So the, the wetland, the, the wetland delineations cannot be confirmed, is that where I'm hearing?
We can confirm the wetland line.
Okay.
But we're not gonna confirm the vernal pool.
Okay. So what's the buffer?
The vernal pool in, under our bylaw, from the mean wa- high-water mark, is a hundred-foot bigger than the mean high-water mark, and then it has a twenty-five, fifty, and a hundred-foot buffer zone.
Okay. So it looks, it's probably about two hundred feet from the border.
And you don't have to worry in the oil.
Okay.
Exactly, so, and you, and if, when we're out in the field, you can't know, you're, you're, I can't be a hundred percent certain that it was far enough away to, you know, not warrant its delineation, so.
So, if, when I have the plan adjusted, am we gonna have to go through the confirmation process again with the consultant?
We just continue the hearing. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean.
Because what I'll do is, if that's the case, since I've already got the deposit, uh, the 53G, just have the consol- your consultant meet my consultant and do it all at once, and have it taken care of, and have the plans updated accordingly.
Fine by me.
Fine by me.
If that's, if that's what we have to do.
Yeah, that's what you should.
But, again, the ANRAD as filed is for, specific to the wetland delineation, correct?
So they could, they could approve the line and have, what they would end up having is a, a, a condition in the ORAD that says there's a vernal pool located likely within two hundred feet of the property that hasn't been delineated, so when you come for an NOI, which is what you're gonna end up doing, you're gonna have to do it anyways, you're gonna have to file, you're gonna have to delineate it and have it shown on a plan. But they could approve the, just the DVW boundary at this point, and then.
Well, that's what we, we submitted, we filed that, right, so am I gonna have to file all this?
She's telling you that when you build, or you build your driveway.
Yep.
You're gonna have to delineate the vernal pool.
Okay.
So, I mean, if you wanted, shoot the dice, that's fine.
Well, I, I don't, no, I wanna go ahead and, and get that done, but I, on the ANRAD that's been filed, I'd like to have the confirmation of that, if that, if, and I think I heard that the, the wetland delineation has been confirmed.
Well, it's gotta be done in a package, if you want to confirm the vernal pool now, then we're not gonna issue an ORAD.
It makes sense to have it all on one document, and so that, you know, when you have your, when you go to file your notice of intent, it's all in one document saying it's both approved.
Okay.
So we'll continue the hearing.
Okay.
Is that what you want? We can issue the ORAD, and you can deal with this later, it's your, your choice.
So what is the ORAD?
The ORAD would be approval of the wetland line that he installed and she confirmed.
That's been done.
That's been done, so I, I'd like to get that closed, and then come back for the.
Let you file, then you'll deal with it then.
File what?
A notice of intent, you're gonna have to file to build the driveway.
Yep, so I'll, yep.
So you could show that on your notice of intent plan?
Yep.
Um, and then that'll, you know, we'll address it then, we'll review the line then.
Yeah.
I'd like to do that, if that's okay with the commission?
It's fine with me.
I plan on doing it, so I'm not gonna cut any corners.
You won't have much choice, I mean, now or then.
Understood.
It's gonna happen.
Understood, but I, I've gone through the ANRAD process, I, if, if that, uh, well, if that.
We'll just make an exception for what she found.
Fair enough.
And you'll deal with it when you, uh, build the lot.
Yep.
All right.
But we'll approve the line.
Okay, I mean, that's.
Okay.
And so, and like I said, there will be a, a special condition in the ORAD that says there is a vernal pool there, um, and that it hasn't been confirmed by this.
So there is a vernal pool in an adjacent.
Parcel, yeah.
Parcel.
Yeah, so, so the, the boundary of the vernal pool is likely to extend onto. So, sorry.
So, again, what is, what is the buffer?
Sorry.
What is the buffer, again?
So the, the, their mean annual boundary of the vernal pool is the extent to which it floods. The vernal pool boundary under the bylaw extends a hundred feet from that area of flooding, and then there's another hundred-foot buffer off of that. So there's, it's like two hundred feet from the, from the flooded area.
Okay.
But he's dealing with a buffer zone operation now.
Correct, yes, yes, yes.
So, it would be the same thing.
That's fair.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Okay, I'll move that we close the hearing, issue an ORAD, uh, for the wetland line, and not for the potential vernal pool. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, sir.
Sorry. We already discussed on the agenda, I just knew this. Did we already talk about that?
So we'll, the, um, we'll have to go through the notification process, the abutments and all that, it's here in slightly.
I heard somebody say something about.
Develop that lot, you have to do the same thing.
Say TLC.
Notify all our abutments, or, uh, within three hundred feet.
Okay.
Was that already talked about?
Understood.
No, we're one of the lots, we didn't have.
It's the same thing every time.
It's coming up.
It is coming up.
It is coming up, yeah, anyway, it's on the agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
It's coming up.
I'm all set, all right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
You wore your warm jacket, too.
Yeah.
So do we, is there anything that?
Nothing you do, we issue an ORAD, you get it by registered mail.
Okay.
You have to record it, and.
Yeah, after I've gotten the plan updated, is that when the ORAD would be recorded?
After you, after we issued the ORAD.
Mm-hmm.
I plead that, that within due date, you have to record it in the registry.
Record, what, what am I actually recording now?
The copy of the ANRAD.
Oh, the updated, no.
Our decision.
Okay, I see.
Yep.
And where, where are those instructions, like, who, who would I register that with?
It's the registry of deeds.
Registry of deeds.
Town, center.
Right, perfect, okay.
You're gonna be a consultant for us, so.
No, no, no. It depends on, uh, it sounds like they, they make pretty good money, so maybe I'll take, uh, take that under consideration, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
We have.
End of dryer.
No, we already went through that.
Huh?
Mr. Dryer continues to twelve, twelve. Mr. Tosh.
Okay. Joseph Tosh. There comes Joseph.
Good evening, everyone, prime down with, uh, NBL in development permitting. With office, it's at 770 Broadway in Ring here, and we can use that stuff. And we do have a DEP file number, it is, um, oh, four, one, four. No comments.
Oh, four, one, four?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, John's Ajax, 490 Winthrop Street. Also, please do.
I brought a few plans just so you can take a look at it close up. This lot is at the corner of Horton Street and Oak Street.
Whereabouts on Oak, okay, I see.
Right in the corner, you can actually see the inset right here.
Yeah.
Over here, where I'm pointing.
Yeah.
You can see Horton Street.
Yeah.
Here's, here's Oak Street, is the intersection of Oak Street and Horton Street. The school is up here in this area here.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's about ten acres of land, uh, with a, with a small area of uplands. The majority of the rest of the lot, uh, is wetlands.
Yeah, we're working with a fellow down here now.
There's an existing structure, uh, on, on the lot with a cesspool. Our surveyors, uh, were able to, uh, locate the cesspool and, uh, identify the septic, uh, system pipe coming out of the structure. We've designed, uh, the, the single-family house, uh, three-family, uh, not three, three-bedroom home, excuse me, I have a cold.
That's okay.
So it's a little bit late. We designed the septic system so that it is outside of the hundred-foot buffer zone, uh, per your regulations, as well as citing it a hundred feet from the existing well that's on the abutting property. And we also hold.
No, this.
We al- we also hold a fifty-foot, uh, no-build zone, uh, associated with the wetlands that we've had delineated on the property. So, we've looked at this as new construction in regards to the regulations, we're not asking for a septic system repair where we could have put the septic system right over here, if we wanted to, as a repair. But we chose not to do that, and show it in full conformance, uh, with the Board of Health rules, or, rules and regulations, as well as the conservation.
Make the potential law owner very happy, too.
Ah, yeah, absolutely.
Right.
So we, we're.
If you did what you said you could do, uh, you probably wouldn't have a happy, oh, new layout.
No, I, if we were putting the septic system closer to the wetlands, you guys wouldn't have been happy with us, the Board of Health wouldn't have been happy.
Fifty feet is what DEP, that's as close as you can get.
Correct. So, we, we could have moved it over if we wanted to, uh, but we didn't, so we, we chose, uh, to go full compliance uh, with the local regs and the state, state regs.
Does the Board of Health approve the, uh, septic?
They're waiting for you guys. The, Todd will not approve this until you say yea. So, um, we're asking for an order of conditions, uh, for us to construct a single-family home in the septic system. And I, I think that this is a, a, a good plan, it protects the environment, protects the wells, and meets the, the regulations.
Protects the well, now, this well is not gonna be used for this house.
No, it's on the other people's lot.
It's on another lot.
Yes, sir. But we still, we still have to show where these other wells are in, in conformance. So if there was a well over here, we'd have another buffer zone over here, like, we've, we've done plans where we've had three, four wells around it, so we show what's on the abutting parcel of land in regards to wells, and then we, we cite the septic system where we can actually cite it. So we're looking for an order of conditions, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, so that, uh, Mr. Touch and his company can build a home in the septic system.
We have some people here that I'm sure.
Yeah, we're at, um, we're on the corner of Horton, we're at 2577 Horton Street.
Across the street from this lot?
No. No.
You're on Horton Street?
We're on Horton Street. There's water that comes in from across the street. There's ponding there. There's a culvert that comes through our property by the corner, comes out on the other side of Horton Street. This is Horton, and this is Horton.
That's running the wetlands that are abutting.
If there's a culvert on Horton Street, I...
There's two culverts on Horton.
We, we didn't survey the culverts, 'cause it's so far away from, from where we are. This is a single-family home. It's exempt from stormwater management, um, so...
This house shouldn't contribute water.
Okay, that's what we have.
I mean, there's plenty of water next to it, but, but ninety-nine percent of the lot is, is wetland.
Yes.
But this particular corner has a little structure there already.
Yeah, I was thinking as well.
I...
No, no.
No, okay, yeah.
Yeah, this is the part, right.
And it's the same one, the cesspool. So it was habitant of sometime. What they're proposing to do is build a house, and it should change the...
Okay.
The...
Okay, there is a culvert that comes onto our property and off of our property.
I'm sure it would have to be, because there's a lot of wetlands in that part of town, and this is a pretty good one.
So the majority of the ten-acre lot as well as...
Yep.
Right? Tom knows what they look like, right?
The inset here, we showed the rest of the, the ten-acre survey and its bearings and distances. So we, we did a full boundary survey as part of this plan.
Is the house being built on Oak, or is it being built on Horton?
Right on the corner.
It is on Oak?
Yes.
And when you say on the corner, you're saying...
The, the lot is on the corner, but...
Where is it located?
The, the lot is on the corner, but the...
So that shack that you're speaking of?
Yes.
You're talking about that rundown graffiti-covered piece of crap, isn't it?
Yes.
It's a shack.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, all right, all right.
And then, and there's a single-family home, like, right over here.
That's a single-family home?
Yes.
But that's back to different, but, yeah. There's a thousand people living there.
It's, it's a single-family house.
I'm just, I'm just curious, 'cause I live on Oak Street.
Living in...
This'll be a single-family home, we promise.
Yeah, no, 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 yeah, yeah. That, that just, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't affect me.
We know, we walk by there.
Yeah, yeah. I, I have to drive there and...
I don't, yeah.
Protect the children.
So, so the proposed house is, is set further back and a little bit further up Oak Street than the, from the shack?
I have no input. Don't worry about me, yeah. I'm further down than that.
So we'd like to close the public hearing and have you issue an order of conditions for us, please.
I'll make a motion that we close the hearing and issue order conditions for this potential home.
Second? All in favor?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Need a, do you need one copy of this?
We need one.
No, you've got, no, you've got...
You've got a whole bunch of them.
Oh, plenty of copies, plenty of...
Perfect, thank you so much.
Yeah. It's heavy, too.
Well, you know, I didn't go through the whole report, but I mean, we tried to do a good job, give you all the information you need. So, thank you very much.
It's a lot better than what was there.
Yeah, I would think so, absolutely. Thank you again.
Thanks.
So...
Shane's here.
We've got Shane.
Yes, gentlemen.
Show us a map, show us what you want.
All right. This is my deal. Basically, just a helpless Generation X who's trying to make it. I'm a furniture maker, and, um... Yeah, I, I...
Okay.
You got a better one?
Well, it's a larger scale, and I also drew a two-scale, um, um, spot where, where this would go up to.
The problem is that he wants to build a nice garage, a nice barn, so he can do a woodworking, and it's, uh...
Unfortunately, it is within the fifty feet of the flag well.
The large part is within the fifty-foot no-build zone.
Yes, sir.
Everybody quieted down, so everybody can hear what you're saying?
Yes.
And we'll be good to go.
He can hear pretty well. If it's just gonna be a little girl, I'd have a problem.
Um, yeah, yeah. I just started my business about five months ago, and not that this is gonna be a commercial, this would be a commercial building. This would just be a residential barn that I'd be doing my DBA out of. I just build custom furniture. I'm a one-man operation. It doesn't pose any disturbance to any of my neighbors. Even, even this barn wouldn't interfere with any of the wetlands that are on my property. Unfortunately, this is the only spot that would make any remote sense to put on my property.
Well, you're gonna put it in front of the house, but...
Well, then I wouldn't be able to sell it. That would be a problem. So if I end up wanting to resell the house someday, it, it would have to be in a spot that's...
Or a successful woodworker. You won't wanna sell it, you wanna stay right there.
Maybe someday. I don't, you never know what the future brings. When I bought the house, we had different priorities. We had children, and my wife stays home, and she's, she homeschools my children, and I wanna be able to be a part of my family. And that's why I decided to say, um, say goodbye to working for the man and make my own money. So I have a lot of ambition, I'm very good at what I do, and I'm just asking for a variance to allow this.
There's a problem. Therein lies the problem.
Yes, sir.
There are no variances in, in our wetland bylaw for the fifty-foot no-build zone.
Okay.
I mean, it's a setback.
Yeah, yeah, that's understandable, yeah. Yeah. And I spoke to you, you're...
I know.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, and I have, I have some photos, if you wanna see the layout of my front yard. I don't know if it would help at all. I also took photos of my...
Well, it would help if you've got a consultant, and they flagged the wetlands, and it was, uh...
Well, these, these, um, these flagged wetlands right here were done when they did the septic, when I bought the house, which was only about five years ago. So these are all very recent.
Does it go right out to the road?
Unfortunately, if you look at my plan, this is the last flag that's, that is shown. So I don't know why this, um, I'd say...
Because the septic system was way back then, it didn't matter.
It didn't affect them, yeah.
They didn't need to go any further.
Yeah. I mean, as the trend goes, it does look like it's in that direction, and I also have this as well. This is another map that I had gotten with my house. And you can see this wetlands delineation goes very far over. So, I mean, if, I mean, I know that you can only build it so far from the road, but, I mean, there's a couple feet gonna matter anyway, so...
Yeah, this is the same one that I, I made a little bit bigger.
Yeah.
But this is the hundred-foot buffer, and this is the fifty-foot buffer, goes right through your proposed barn.
Yeah. And I, I even had thought of the fact of, oh, I mean, here's, here's some photos of, of the front of my house, but the, um, um, looking at the other side of the property, like, in this area where the well is, if I was to even put a barn there, what is it, fifteen feet from a boundary is how far you would have to have?
Right. For anything.
Yeah, yeah, so that fifteen feet would still put me right in front of my house, and it would also, to be able to miss this well, I would basically be within two or three feet of the, of the road, which poses another problem, so...
Yeah, I don't know if you can go that close.
And I mean, I, I, like, I mean, I, I know the, the law is what it is, and I don't, I don't know if there's any...
What you could do is, is, uh, is get a consultant to flag the rest of it and see if you have it more withable.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, I have a two-scale ruler, and even, I, I did...
It's over there on the chair.
Oh, thank you. On this one, I had, I had, um, labeled it right here. From that very corner, at the closest point, would be about thirty-one feet. So I'm still nineteen feet into that buffer zone.
When I talked and I, I looked at your driveway, and I, I thought maybe if you ran the driveway in at an angle, it would bring it further out. You might have to build a forty-foot or thirty-eight-foot, uh, you know? But you could modify it so you could fit within that, that zone.
So I would need nineteen feet, and even at the width of my driveway right there, there's two enormous oak trees, which, I think you can see right here, and...
You store them in the backyard and make furniture.
I know.
Hey, why not red? I make trains.
They're red. Well, actually, one of them's red, one of them's white. Yeah, yeah, and they're, they're too beautiful, they're about eighty, eighty-year-old trees. And this, this spot right here would only require me to drop one large tree. And that tree actually is, is totally destroyed on this, on the, uh, the upper canopy, 'cause it was destroyed by a bunch of snow a few years back. So all the other stuff that's in that area are just saplings, that are just pines and, like, a small elm tree. That's all it is. And it, uh, at the edge of the, of the driveway, it kinda starts to, to go down in grade, but from the driveway grade to the furthest point of where that would go out might be about three feet from, um, you know, a grade drop from the driveway. But I, uh, I, my, my basement is not even six feet high, and I've had to rip my bulkhead off of my house just in order to move a cabinet out of my house. And if, if this was, if I can do this, it would be, I would, I would be grateful.
Well, I think you have to do what Charlie suggested.
Okay.
Get yourself an expert.
Try to get, yeah.
Get yourself some flags up there and, and, and try to wiggle something in there.
So, I mean, if I, if I...
Oftentimes, these consultants, so there's no kickback, they, they go beyond what the Wetland Act requires. 'Cause it's a determination they make. Fifty percent of all of the plants beyond the flag have to be upland plants. What we can do is just a little thing for a, a beach field. I mean, you could eight feet, nine feet, and just drop flags.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And it isn't completed. If it goes off at an angle, that gives you a lot more wiggle.
So you're, you're saying if I did get a consultant?
We've tried everything else. Right now, there's no way we can move the fifty-foot one.
Yeah, yeah.
So you, you're only gonna have an eight-foot...
At least not with this plan.
Yeah.
So I, I, you're, you're saying to get a consultant to re-flag and continue all the way to the street?
Yeah, try to get what you can.
Yeah, see what you can get.
See what you can find.
Tell him what you wanna do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And see...
If he hangs flags on the wetland and we go check it out, I mean, it's not gonna work. It's gotta be a reasonable delineation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And if he's an honorable guy or girl, I'm sure will be, but if you try to coerce him, you know, to hang flags where they shouldn't be...
Yeah, 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 which are clearly...
You only kick it in the front.
No, 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 and I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, yeah, yeah.
But that would be my suggestion. Right now, you don't, unless you move the driveway, or build it on the driveway, or put it in front of the house, you don't have much choice.
So if I, theoretically, if I was to take this and put this on my driveway here, then would we not have to, we wouldn't have to meet...
If it's outside of that fifty-foot zone, then it's a...
I would just need a building permit then, and, or through the planning board, whatever is necessary. As long as what is labeled on this plan right here, and I am strong fifty feet out of that buffer zone, is what you're saying.
You'd still have to come back to the commission, because it's gonna be within a hundred-foot buffer zone.
Okay, yeah, that's correct. Yeah, you guys still have that.
Yeah, you still have to file.
Okay, all right.
So, but it wouldn't have to be dependent on what you, how you can arrange this. It could be a, a request for determination of applicability. It's a lot cheaper, uh, requires advertising, and it's a very simple hearing. But notice of intent, like they did with this one, it requires a little bit more.
Okay.
You have to get somebody to draw plans. But, I mean, you've gone this far, you're pretty, uh, you're right into it. See what you can do in that direction.
Okay, so, so if you don't mind, the...
I don't mind.
The, um, the, the order of operations that I should take is, is to consult, uh, consult...
Get a consultant.
Okay, there you go.
Get the whole wetland line approved.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, this may be accurate, maybe it's not.
Yeah, yeah, it could be more, it could be less. Yeah, yeah. All right, and then once that is delineated on a plan?
Uh, yeah, then, then you, you can determine whether you've got, you're, you're outside of that zone or not outside of that zone. If, if it's, if he shows that it, there's no hope, we're putting a garage there, or a barn, there's no hope.
Okay.
Unless you move it in front of the house, and then worry about selling it later.
Yeah.
Or try to sell it to another, uh, woodworker.
Yeah, few and far between. Okay.
All right, Shane. Good luck.
All right. I appreciate your time, gentlemen, thank you.
No problem. That's the rest of the public chair.
Sorry, I...
Hey, I, I recognize you now.
Thank you. I'd like to address the board again, and ask that we not proceed with the ORAD?
We've already closed the hearing.
Okay.
I mean, we can't unclose it without having a problem here.
Okay. Fair enough.
You've already got it logged in?
Fair enough.
In a minute.
Understood.
I've had it.
Yeah, and it's on.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay.
'Cause I had an opportunity to talk to my consultant, and he said probably the right thing to do would have been to continue... Yeah, 'cause I had just gotten the, I mean, that's the first I had seen of this, uh...
Yeah, the first we saw of it was today, too.
It would've been nice to get some heads up on it before, before the meeting, so I could've prepared. So I'll have to go through this whole, the process is gonna have to start all over again?
No. When you build the, whatever you're gonna build there...
Okay.
When you file with the commission?
Yep.
You'll have to show that on your plan.
What, the, the...
Determine the vernal pool location.
Okay.
She spotted it, it's there.
Yep, yep, oh, yeah.
And then the, the boundaries will make a difference in how you place your driveway.
Okay. So we, there's nothing, there's no more, well, um, other than coming down to the commission for approval, that is that...
Next step is when you build and file.
Okay.
There's nothing we can do now.
No.[1556.34]
Well, even, even with the plan, updated plan, what, that's, would be needed for the file? For, for the-
For the building, yeah.
For building. Okay? But I, I mean, there's not a, it wouldn't go through the, another Anrad-style process?
No, no, no.
Or, or Rad, or whatever?
Well, they would have to flag it, and, and we would have to check it, but your guy could do that.
Yeah, so I, I'm wondering if we could have, when John does it, if we could have your consultant, assuming there's still enough funds in the fifty-three-
You'd have to file another ORAD, another Anrad.
Another Anrad.
Yeah, because I mean, that's what you're doing, is determining a delineation, and that's what Anrad handles.
So, that, there has to be another Anrad. So, I, so the answer's yes.
Either the Anrad or go through the process of building, the building process, file then.
Okay. But either way, at building time, you gotta come in, they gotta come in here and-
Yes, yes.
So, it makes sense to do the plan and bring that in here during, during the building process?
Yeah.
Okay. Otherwise, I mean, but that would have to go through an Anrad process, if I'm understanding, though, correct?
Not necessarily, it could be part of the plan.
I'm sorry. So, it wouldn't be subject to another Anrad, the delineation?
If you wanted to be, but if on your determin, you asked for determination.
I asked for-
Oh, well, yeah, I filed it, yeah. Yeah, you could have filed for the house with that, and, and we would have done the delineation, we go through all the same-
Same process.
Yeah.
So, the pro, but I guess I just want, all clear, the process, so-
You check with your consultant, and he can-
Advise it.
I mean, there's a lot of regulations to the wetland act.
Yep, I get that.
I mean, we've, we've approved wetland delineations before-
Yep.
Uh, without an Anrad. We can do it either way, but you filed the Anrad to determine if that was a correct wetland line, because you thought that was the only problem you were gonna have, and apparently so did your consultant.
Okay. So, I guess I'm still confused, though.
I'm confused, now you're getting me confused.
So, there is a, a need for an Anrad, though. Either way, with the, if they say-
It would be determination, it would approve the delineation, doesn't have to be an Anrad. An Anrad is a standalone thing that you ask for before you build.
Okay.
But it determined wetlands, if they determine that's a vernal pool, if he, if he sets it out, and, and the consultant agrees, he can pop that right in the plan and-
And let's it go.
Yeah.
And would, would it mean-
Then you would, you would see how it affects your plans to build. It would be wise to have them do it anyway.
Uh-huh, I agree, I played on doing that, that's, but I guess, so I should also engage your consultant as well?
He, if he determines the size of the vernal pool-
Yep.
A potential vernal pool.
Yep.
Then you can make plans, see how it affects your driveway.
Okay.
If you're not, if you're not, if you're not out where you have to be, you don't have to get anybody involved except, I mean, it has to be filed, but you don't have to get everybody there for all of it. I mean, if you're back away from, you know, wetlands for that Anrad, you know what I mean?
I mean, you could have him delineate it.
Yep.
And he could determine how it's gonna affect your current proposal.
Yeah, so, let's say it comes in within the same buffer, or, you know-
You don't have a problem.
Yeah, as long as everything's on this side-
At least it would be, it would be there.
Yep.
And when you file, you know that you're not gonna have a problem.
But will that, I guess, the other thing, will that have to be confirmed again? And I, I mean, I'm not gonna go out there and put flags up, but I'm just saying, my consultant is-
You put flags, and he can tell you exactly how it's gonna affect your current proposal.
Understood.
Or maybe not.
But will that need to be confirmed again? Because I, I, I'm not seeing that this is standard, what is the standard procedure to have somebody's wetland delineations done by a professional consultant confirmed? How, how often is that, how often, what is the criteria for saying, well, this plan needs to be confirmed by our consultant? What is the criteria? I'm just curious.
It's how big it is.
Yeah.
I mean, Charlie and I ain't gonna walk around in a brush, stumbling around, and somebody twenty-five years old can bounce right through there and check up for us.
No, and I, and I understand that, but everybody in here's got wetlands, but I, I haven't heard anybody else have to have their wetlands confirmed, and I'm just curious, what is the-
Everybody has.
Everybody has them confirmed.
Oh, yeah.
So, it's standard procedure.
The guy just said, you know, he wanted to build a barn-
Yep.
Within the fifty-foot buffer of the wetland.
Okay.
And he, under our bylaw, you can't build a structure in that fifty-foot location.
Yep.
So, he'd be looking for variance, we don't have a variance set up for that, it's a-
It's a hard set up.
So, if the wetlands come within the current buffer zone-
If the vernal pool and all the lines-
Yep.
Don't go over to what we've approved-
Right, then it's-
You're all set.
Okay.
But your consultant will tell you that.
Of course.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes, sir.
We've got other people on the agenda.
I'm sorry, thank you for not, your time.
If he, if he determines that, flags that vernal pool-
Yep.
It's not something that we can't walk around and look at.
Understood.
So, we don't have to hire a consultant to do that.
Okay, but I'd come, I'd have to come, somebody'd have to come back in, submit that plan to you folks.
You could submit that with the building plan.
Okay.
We're gonna build a driveway-
Either way.
It's in the buffer zone.
Yep.
You have to file.
Right, and that requires a bottom notices and all that?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Okay.
Although, it looks like you're a pretty good, you're gonna give me a consultant before this is all over. You've got a few more lots to work on.
You're gonna make a little bit of money on this, you know.
The next time you'll go, you'll be a slicker.
I'm in the wrong business, I'm sure, but thank you very much, gentlemen, for your time.
Good night. Anton Roderick, Lot fourteen, Parcel Four, Main Street.
That's a, that's a lost cause, that's a fight right to the end.
Jesus, this reminds me, I should have been talking with Jim Agia about his barn. Tony built a barn down there on his property on one thirty-eight.
Without a building permit.
Without a building permit, and it's in a-
And more than likely in a fifty-foot building zone.
More than likely in a fifty-foot.
So, we're gonna have a great, great time ahead of us.
Oh, Jesus, this is gonna not be good.
Put a flag with a multimillionaire.
Who? Oh, Mr. Roderick? Okay. Some suggestions. Right by his place.
He's next.
One thirty-eight, Tom Ferry's next, he's right there. One thirty-eight.
Yeah.
Tony's house. He's got a dog.
Come on, boss, I can't hear you.
Yeah. The marsh is here. He built a brand-new barn. The day that I walked the property with the consultant from Surford. What the hell's that banging?
Can we do consult first?
They go, come on, I give it.
It's not on the agenda, but we'll do it.
A big barn. So, I said to Jim Agia, great, hey, when he said a visit, you know, he said, I don't always build that, never file.
This is a proposed lease agreement?
Yes.
She wants us to approve it?
Yeah, she wants us to- No, she wants you to review it, and your meeting, your last meeting, well, last meeting I was here, you guys suggested a five-year lease.
Right.
It's, the pyramid process would be better for three years-
Counselor.
With a three-year, with a possible three-year extension, and she'd rather go that way. First off, I need to apologize for her, she wishes to be here, she really wanted to present this herself. She wanted me to start with that. But, back to the-
Oh, my goodness, what else?
Back to the lease and the RFP, she already changed it to a three-year, and she needs your approval on your, your meeting level here, because you asked for a five-year, so you wanna make sure you're in agreement with the three, with a three-year extension.
Yeah, what was the difference between three and five? What was the-
The procurement process, there wouldn't be an extension with the five, and then you would have to do the RFP automatically. With the three, with the possible three-year extension, you gain two things, it's, because this is a learning process for all of us, this is new.
Right.
So, we have an out, and you already, you'll be tenably looking at a six-year with the, you know, total of six-year, and you wouldn't have to do the RFP that quick.
Oh.
And it may not fall, if I understand it right, it may not fall with the RFP, because the dollar, you'll establish what the dollar value would actually be after you've been going through the whole.
And RFP is a, comes into a certain dollar value.
Correct, but since we don't know where it's gonna land, you need to do this first.
And what is it right at the moment?
It looks like it's gonna be at least four hundred dollars for a year, at least, and that's another thing you need to vote on tonight also, the minimum of four hundred, and where would that go? And I'm assuming you're a-
Below the RFP requirement?
No, you need to establish it for advertising. That's how, and I guess, working with the town assessor, that's how she came up with that figure, based on the other farming activities in the area or industry.
Have a seat, Tom. Is there something you can copy from another town that has one?
She has, yes. This is an aggressive one, this particular one she picked might be mimicking golf courts agreement, but she's reviewed a few of them.
Where did she go with the figure?
Working with the town assessor and the Aggie school also, I believe. So, the minimum figure you need you to vote on is four hundred for advertising, and people might bid higher.
Almost all of these farms, it doesn't matter, any of the agriculture, whatever the tax value.
Correct.
You know what I'm saying?
So, right, so-
The property, so, but, not a household value, what would be, you know, under the, under chapter sixty-one?
Correct. And that, that brings up another point, what is actually being farmed? And the other thing I need to discuss in that property is being surveyed, because it might not be six acres being farmed, even though you just bought the six acres.
Yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't matter, it's a six-acre parcel, that's how they bring it, under jurisdiction, right or wrong to it.
You know, the USDA is gonna use their maps to determine the size, if you're gonna view crop report, they're using the satellite maps, and I mean, they've got it right down. So, you, you wanna lease whatever you, that, what we call-
Well, I mean, I would, I would say it'd be, be the whole parcel.
It'd be right parcel, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not gonna be a six-acre parcel, and the guy's using like four-point-nine acres, but he can't get in the wetlands for the rest, but whatever under, under sixty-one A, it'd be under a six-acre parcel, so, you know.
Right, so, I, I brought in this survey discussion, because I, with all the other activities, my department helps out with both conservation and parking rec. We need to see good bounds, you know, not just for the council oak itself, but more importantly, your field in relation to the other farmer and your borders to north and east, west, that we have potential problems with. So, if we have the clear bounds, that helps us put signage up, gates, and stuff like that, to protect whoever's gonna be in there. While I'm talking about the surveying, I already went over this with Delaney Associates, who we use a lot, and that project with setting the bounds should be less than five grand, if you guys wanna entertain that tonight also.
You offer us four hundred bucks, we gotta pay you a hundred.
My grant's gonna have to find me quite a few years to get a survey.
So, we got a few things to discuss.
Okay.
So, you get a review of the RFP, change it to three, or you guys need to agree to change it to three, because you already approved five, with the possible three-year extension, and ask permission to post it sometime in December, when this is all cleared up, vote to receive a minimum of four hundred dollars per year for the lease, and where would that money go? Where's that being designated?
Conservation commission.
We're assuming that, but you have a fund set up for that, receive it? I'm assuming it's the same fund that you buy land with, though.
No, we've got, we've got funds set up, but I don't know if we got a fund specifically.
We'd have to check with the-
An account.
Yeah.
Well, that, your vote would need to designate its destination, so, we're assuming it's gonna, that same, where you bought the land from, that fund?
Yeah.
The money could go there, if that's what you so choose for.
Okay.
That's for example. The other thing I added on to her list, to come down here and see you guys, is this project. I mean, we formerly know it as Council Oak Two, and that was because, that was phase two of that Council Oak project, and maybe we should have a different name for the property or project. The assessor's map, call it Zero Council Oak Way, if you wanna use that, or just Council Oak Land, maybe Council Oak Two's coming out as a name.
That looks, could be like construed as Council Oak also.
Your agreement says Zero Council Oak Way, sounds good to me.
Yeah, that sounds good. All right, let's take them one at a time, let's, let's start off with the first one, about, from three to five, let's do that.
All right.
The only farmer we have here is our expert at the end. Three, does that sound like a good deal?
No, not really. Well, I mean, you can speak if you want, Jim.
No, not a lager, not a farmer.
Well, first of all, first of all, all the sixty-one's recreational agriculture, all that, used to be five, now it jumped to ten. So, it's, it's gonna stay there, give the guy a half a session, so don't go with three, and then three, and then you bring it up again, now at the end of it, it's like twelve years, well, if something goes in between, if you keep it at five, it's even to run concurrent with, you know, the state regs on agricultural recreational land, and I don't see the difference between three and five. I don't really think any of the farmers that are gonna be bidding on this are really going anywhere. And just make it, if you sign for it, you're in it for five years, and any illegitimate farmers, when they sign up for it, they're in it for the ten-year deal. Under sixty-one, either that, they're gonna pay all the difference in the taxes, you know, if they're in there for nine and then back out, they're gonna pay all that back stuff, so.
I think some of them are gonna need ten years to review this thing.
Well, no, not really, but I mean, you know, it's a-
So, what do you say the reason was that she went to, for three?
For procurement reasons, at this point, as, I guess the cost for just procuring it through the central registry and advertising, when that is gonna, is gonna exceed the four hundred also.
Well, yeah, but I mean, it's a, well, you, what are you gonna charge the farmer to pay all your bills?
No.
Well, so, I mean, it's not up to the farmer, although, the only thing the farmer has to pay for is what you set forward, and basically, all you can set forward is that he's gotta maintain it, and he's also gotta pay, like, the lease or whatever is, is like basically the tax revenue. And, you know, you can't really squeeze them too hard.
Nope.
Because otherwise, you won't get a farmer in there.
Right, I mean, that's why she suggested at least a four hundred minimum, and go from there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, they could come in higher, it could be right on.
Yeah, you know, and I mean, like I say, most of the time, you know, unless they plan on growing marijuana, except for any good crops, and then you can squeeze them for more.
Yeah, then we can push the price up.
And you can push the price up. That's, I don't know, other than that, anybody that's gonna be hay, produce-
Corn, silage, anything.
Silage, you know, unless Jim can get a good crop to turn up, so, you know.
All you gotta do is sell them. All right.
Say, stay in five years?
Five years.
I say five years.
I'd say five years.
Because if somebody goes in the hay with that, if, if you're gonna sell it down the hay-
They know what the hell they, I mean, they're farmers.
If you're gonna sell it down, you're making a pretty major investment, if you're gonna put something decent in there.
Yeah.
And you're gonna want that for at least five years, three years, it's like, I wouldn't put anything-
It's pretty easy to change that.
Good forage hoys in there.
No.
For less than, less than five years.
Correct.
So, she's asking that-
I'll look at that motion.
All right. Motion, let it say it's at a minimum of five-year lease.
Minimum of five.
I'm second that.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, she's asking if, I, I don't expect you guys to answer or review the whole thing tonight, but she's asking to post it sometime in December, you know, to anticipate the growing season coming quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom, what's the importance of a survey? Why we gotta draw five grand to determine this field's six acres? If you go to the USDA office over in Ton, the FSA office, they're gonna tell you exactly what that piece of open land is.
I'm, I'm after the bounds to help maintain the property.
Okay.
To protect us, it's, if everything else that's going on-
Okay, I, I was thinking that-
That you probably don't know about, or you may know about.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so, I have good, actually, I was planning on using some of the chunks of the granite from the bridge project, has good bounds, delineate, put the X on the ground, we'll put them right in, something that's not gonna move.
I thought you were just looking to determine the open, open field size.
No, I, I just throwing that out there to help determine the open part of the field, if that was needed, but as Jack was indicating, you're looking at the whole, the whole parcel itself, what they'd use with, I mean, they may want the lower level, because we own half of that lower level, they may want defecating, you know, or hay, you can hay the slope, too.
Yeah.
But the lower level doesn't belong to, to us.
Half of it does, tentatively.
Okay.
Tentatively, at least on IGIS map it does, and actually, I've got a plan, well, you can't see the slope, I'm there. Oh, that's the original, that is gonna help you. I got the original one, when we get the Council Oak Two. Yeah, it, it looks like half, and it's not at ninety-degree angle either, that lower level, we own-